Hi Bill.
Hey Jeff.
How are you?
Okay.
Good. That's your, ah, it's Remy, okay.
And Cynthia is here?
Yep. Hey James.
Hey James.
Good evening, how you guys doing?
Good, you?
Pretty good.
Pretty good, I knew to wait like five or six seconds since, uh, always have a little delay.
Hi Cynthia, hey Bobby.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
Good.
Hope everybody's well and good tonight?
Yep, a little wet.
I know that Nancy Carpenter has, she said that she's going to the budget forum tonight, so she may not be able to make it.
Okay. And did we hear from Ms. Gilmore?
She is not on either as a participant or as a, an observer at this point.
Okay.
Could wait a few more minutes.
Okay.
Hey, we, we got rain out there, but at least it's not snowing.
You know, we told you.
Or no tornadoes.
No, wait till the weekend, it's supposed to get really cold.
Oh great.
Aw man. Can't make up his mind.
Yep.
As always.
The handsome.
Hello, eh Chairman, as I just spoke with Ms. Gilmore, she's in the process of logging in now, she said.
Alright. As an unofficial, uh, prelude to this meeting, uh, not wanting to introduce politics into the actual meeting, uh, I would recommend that, uh, the UN World Food Program is a four-star, uh, charity. Hundred percent of their money goes to, hundred, hundred percent of what you give goes to the people. Uh, they help, uh, and they have a special Ukraine fund.
So, what is it called though, the UN Food Program?
The UN World Food Program.
World, okay, gotcha, thank you.
Just, uh, things are not, not good.
Nope.
Wait one more minute here. Cynthia, that dog is big enough to show up even through the, the fog.
Yes, she sure is. I don't know why she's decided to inject herself into this meeting, but let me take care of that.
Yeah. Okay, well let us, uh, uh, call this meeting to order, uh, I hope Ms., uh.
Thing up here.
Ms. Gilmore can, uh, join us fairly soon. Uh, welcome to the, uh, special meeting of the Charlottesville civilian oversight board. Um, tonight, the only substantive, uh, item on our agenda is, uh, discussion of, discussion of our operating procedures. Let me take a, a brief minute to tell you exactly where we are. You've got, uh, yesterday, late last night, uh, the latest version of the operating procedures. The story behind that is that, uh, Hansel and Theresa and I have been working hard, uh, since, you know, the weekend to incorporate comments, uh, from our, our learned counsel, uh, as well as the, um, city attorney, uh, and to, you know, reconcile sort of differences of opinion among ourselves, uh, to pull together, uh, this version of the document, which I think is pretty complete, uh, although, uh, certainly not perfect. Some good and bad news is that the city council has told us that they will not be able to consider the operating procedures, uh, at their meeting on the fourth of April. Uh, they will be, uh, work, they will be, they're now currently, uh, scheduled for the next meeting after that, which is the eighteenth. That, um, is, is good because it, it's bad because it delays the process, it's good because, uh, it enables us to, uh, do any last-minute corrections that we think, uh, may be needed before we actually submit the document. Uh, it turns out that the city attorney, uh, has proposed that the entire format of the, um, document be changed, uh, to be a, to be much more, uh, formal with each, each power consisting of its own Charlottesville official document. And so if, uh, she insists on that, uh, either we or she would have to break what we've, what we've done into pieces. Uh, and I hope we can avoid that. Uh, tonight, what I'd like to do is, uh, answer any questions, uh, or, um, you know, discuss any issues that are important to folks, uh, and then, uh, talk about a path forward. I sent, uh, that little table around that shows things that have changed since our last, uh, version, and that's not a lot, uh.
Interestingly, excuse me.
Yeah, we, and we have actually incorporated some of the language provided by the city attorney, uh, but not everything that she has, uh, suggested has been in there. So, uh, without further ado, uh, I'll throw up the discussion, Hansel, do you have any comments you want to make?
Just one quick procedural question for Ms. Hudson, do we, do they need to vote on approval of the agenda before they get officially started, or even though it's a special meeting, or?
Typically, yes, you want to go in the order of your agenda and the first order of business is typically approve it, or permission of motion to approve it.
Does anyone want to move to, uh, prove the, approve the agenda?
I moved, uh, to approve the agenda.
I'll say again.
Okay, uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore here? Um, Chair Mendez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Watson?
Yes.
And so we have not, uh, the motions seem to have carried, uh, we have not, uh, yet generated, uh, minutes from our last meeting, we'll prove those, uh, at our next regular meeting in two weeks. So now I guess we can go back and proceed to talk about the operating procedures, I've had those on, on the brain for, uh, for the last week, very intensely. Uh, so Hansel, uh, you have any comments about the process or, or the outcome at this point?
Hmm, uh, just, um, just a clarification on the, the format that the city uses, is, it wouldn't be a heavy lift, um, to get it in that shape, it is, just to get you familiar with it, is, is the format that, uh, the CPD, you might have seen it with their general orders, so it'll look something like that, and they have modules, and if you guys approve the content, then we can, uh, reformat it into that, and that, that shouldn't be a heavy lift. So I don't want, uh, anybody to get concerned about formatting issues.
Yeah, it is. It's not too heavy a lift, but then you end up referring from one, you know, from one, a module to another module, and it's, you know, but anyway, you're right, I understand. Um, Cynthia, any, any comment? Oh, yeah, Jeff?
Well, I was just gonna, that was my question, ask Ms. Hudson if she had any, uh, general thoughts about what, what we've put forth so far.
We have shared, we being, uh, Colin Seltzer and myself have, um, talked at some length with, um, Mr. Mendez and Hansel about, um, some more general comments, probably the most significant of which are the ones that coincide with the observations that Lisa Robertson made, uh, as the city attorney. Uh, we were on all fours with respect to the matter of redundancy between the ordinance and the operating procedures. And, and largely out of a concern of lack of necessity to include identical provisions in both, um, both pieces of legislation, and, and also just kind of a, a little bit of a mingling concern about any inconsistency between the, 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 the operating procedure language and similar language in the ordinance. Um, a- and, a- again, Bill and, and Hansel have come back, I know that, uh, what you have tonight represents their, their, their sense of, of that, and their reckoning with those comments. Um, the rest of them were other questions that we raised that I, I, I think we resolved, um, to our satisfaction, uh, in a conversation yesterday. But let, let me say this too, I, I have not had the opportunity, having just received this very latest, um, draft, to review it in, um, and it's in detail, though Bill's table certainly helps to focus my attention, so any turnaround, it's necessary to do.
Yeah, and thank you, and we definitely appreciate your, your, and Colin's help, uh, you know, discussion we had on Monday was very, uh, very useful. There are a couple of, uh, I'll, I'll start off with a couple of big things, I know Hansel has, uh, something that he would like us to deal with, um, the, uh, one of the thing, one of the little items on my table is, um, this, uh, Article Nine, which is called initial review. It, um, in the old draft, we had Hansel being responsible for making all the calls, uh, on his own about whether, uh, a the board would investigate a complaint. Uh, and now we have proposed some language, uh, that allows him, and requires him to consult with the board, uh, on those kind of decisions. Uh, and we've taken out the last vestiges of any language that says, uh, we dismiss complaints, uh, we can refuse to investigate them, um, but we don't dismiss them. And you see the little asterisk by that, uh, change in the document. Uh, those two, those asterisks indicate places where we meant to put that in, but owing to editorial malfeasance, uh, we didn't actually, we didn't actually put it in, uh, and so there's actually a paragraph missing, uh, the last paragraph is missing, missing from initial review. And I'll, I'll share that with everyone, uh, you, you shortly. Uh, another big issue was that where, uh, the city attorney expressed a lot of concern was about mediation. And I believe that she was, uh, you know, perhaps under the impression that we would be mediating financial claims against the city, uh, rather than using mediation in the sense of, uh, restorative justice in, in which, you know, two individuals, uh, get together and this, you know, discuss their differences in a non-threatening, you know, non-hyper, uh, hyper adversarial, uh, atmosphere, and so Hansel has, uh, you know, adopted, uh, some of the city attorney's language and adopted that.
Is that Article Twenty-Six, Mr. Chair, where it says about, uh, an item, uh, I, with the PCOB does not have authority to decide or resolve claims for monetary relief, that's the language?
Yeah.
Okay, good, just want to make sure.
Yeah, no, no, that's really, you know, that's sort of, uh, the city attorney quite, quite reasonably saw, you know, saw the implicit, uh, the implicit idea of, of resolving claims against the city as being something that was, we needed to clarify, and, and thanks to Hansel, we did, in fact.
Good.
Clarify it, so. Uh, do you, I have anything else to say about mediation, Hansel?
No, that, I think what you, uh, mentioned captured it, I, I think the issue here is that mediation in this sense is new to Virginia, so she, my understanding of, going from the lens of pre-litigation type mediation, uh, but in oversight world, it's been around for a few decades, and it doesn't do any of the, uh, sort of things that a pre-litigation mediation would do. It's really an, uh, an opportunity or venue for the complaining, the subject officer to be able to work out their differences.
Yeah, I, I think this could be a huge part of what we do, uh, you know, not just because resource-wise, which, you know, has obvious, uh, has obvious advantages if we don't have to do an investigation and so on. Uh, but in the fact that it would encourage and allow subject officers and, uh, complainants to actually meet each other as human beings in a non-threatening environment. And that might, that might help a lot to establish, uh, you know, better relations, uh, between the police and the community. Uh, and of course, uh, as Hansel has pointed out in the past, you know, uh, while the mediation itself is, uh, confidential, uh, the individuals involved can publicly apologize, shake hands, uh, or fashion some other kind of, uh, some other kind of remedy or remedial action that, that they want to, so I think, I think this is a, a very hopeful thing. Another, uh, any, anybody else have any questions about remediation, uh, excuse me, mediation?
I assume, Mr. Chair, that, that means, for instance, that we could, um, be much more efficient in disposition of cases where that were the option, I mean, it would certainly, uh, uh, shorten the, um, the timeframe, is that a fair assumption?
I think that is one of the benefits.
Okay.
Uh, and, you know, from a standpoint of, of, of our interests, it would, could potentially reduce the cost of, of in- investigations uh, and hearings.
Yes.
And, uh, we have, the way it is currently structured is that, you know, the, the object is good faith participation. Uh, and that basically that both, uh, both participants come away satisfied.
Yeah.
If the complainant does not, is not satisfied, we're not shutting them out of the process, if they want to go back and say, please pursue this investigation, they can ask us to do that, but then again, we have the, uh, ability to to at least inquire gently why, you know, um, so, uh, we're not taking away anybody's, uh, rights by asking them to volunteer for mediation.
Got it.
Uh, another, uh, issue where the, uh, city attorney had major, major problems with, with, uh, peaceable assembly monitoring. She was very concerned that, uh, it would, it would be hard for the board to, uh, become informed of police tactical plans and still uh, comply with FOIA, and it would be very hard for the police, in fact, to provide those tactical plans which might not be available, you know, right up until the second that this as- assembly occurred. Uh, and also, I have been heard from Nancy, uh, who is, uh, who is actually a mon- active monitor working with lawyers' guild. Um, her judgment is that she would rather have the freedom to act as an individual uh, in assembly monitoring rather than a, uh, to be bound up with, uh, the rules of the board. And so what has happened to that section is now it makes clear that, uh, members of, individual members of the board can act as peaceable assembly monitors, uh, but it's now no longer a, a specific board function. So that, that's a fairly big change. The, a- any questions about that? Um, the, uh, city attorney was very helpful in providing us with new language about, um, sort of a procedure for doing our annual budget, police annual budget review, uh, we thank you for that, and that has now been incorporated.
Hey Bill?
Yes?
Uh, real quick, just backtracking, on the, uh, peaceful assembly, it, there's a piece in there that says that, uh, if anybody wanted to partake in peaceful assembly, if I understand it correctly, that, uh, there's some type of training. So you may have mentioned that Nancy may have, may have that training, but, um, I'd have to, I'd have to find that, that, that part, but it says something about, you know, you, and I don't know if it's like a, you read something, or you watch a video, so if you want to kind of monitor a protest, it sounds like there's some level of training that, uh, board members should have if they choose to monitor a, a protest.
That is.
Let me see, where did I see that at? It was in there somewhere.
Section B of that article.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just calls for them to have appropriate, uh, uh, training, and in fact, the lawyers' guild, which is a, a, a major group that does this, does have training. Uh, and so that, you know, the, the, this, I, the idea of the is simply to make sure that section B here is simply to make sure, uh, that the, that anybody, including the member of the board who's doing, at, trying to act as a monitor, is appropriately trained, and they identify themselves so that they can be distinguished from participants, and that they not be participants. So.
Yeah, a- and I get that, I guess it's just a matter of, uh, maybe all of us getting that training? So that, uh, cause you know, these things just happen nowadays, you know, these events, some, something goes wrong, and then, you know, people trying to get out in the streets, and so, um, just knowing that we have that training or whatever, you know, and, and like, and as it says, we identify, you know, who we are and all that kind of stuff, when and, when and if possible, in those, in those circumstance.
Yeah, apparently there's a very, uh, I mean, I'm not the expert on this, and I, I'm sorry Nancy is not here. Uh, but there's, you know, there is an extensive training program and, and a sort of protocol that you go through. Uh, and it's mostly tuned to demonstrations that for which, uh, as in section A, there's been an advance application for a permit.
Okay.
And so, you know, when those permits are granted under section eighteen thirty-five or eighteen thirty-six, uh, you know, that a thousand people are going to hear, come and march for reproductive freedom. Uh, the idea then is that the people who monitor such, uh, such gatherings would get, also, um, start planning their own, uh, monitoring, uh, procedures, so. It's not, uh, it's not meant for, uh, spontaneous, uh, gatherings, but clearly, somebody who is, who is trained, uh, would be a much better, would be a, a much better observer, so. That, now, answer that question. And the last thing that I have on my list, and it's not, this is by any means what you might all have on your list, is that we now have two versions of section thirty-four, uh, which is complaints against board members. The version that is in there now is pretty much the same as it was, uh, the last time around. And it has the, uh, executive director, forming committee of, of volunteers from outside the board, uh, to report on the reported, uh, misconduct, and then it has the board go back and review that report. The, there's another version which is, and, and then communicate that to the city council. There's another version, uh, that Hansel sent out this morning, um, that sent out last night, which was provided by the city attorney, which, um, takes the board out primarily of this review role and reassigns it, uh, more toward the city council, is, am I doing justice to that council?
Well, there actually still is an element where the board members can assign a committee, there are actually two different approaches, so in the city attorney's version, the board can assign, um, some, a, a committee to look at the complaint, it would be members not involved, that, that are not subject to that complaint, and they would have a sort of disposition on it. Um, or that they will bring it to the board, and the board can, can vote on giving them a verbal or written censure of the member, or exclusion of the member from specific PCOP proceeding, so there is some involvement of board members with that process.
Mm-hmm, yeah, but again, only the, only the city council can actually issue the ultimate sanction, um, so.
And in both versions, that the, the city council is the ultimer, the ultimate, um, body that gives the, the sanction. And in both versions, that the, the city council is the ultimate, the ultimate body that gives the sanction.
Yep. Yeah, go ahead, Cynthia.
I'm, I'm not sure my microphone is working properly. Now, Mr. Watson said that he was having trouble hearing me.
Yeah, it's, you're, sound like you're underwater.
I'm not exactly sure what's going on with my microphone, and I'll just make this really quick question. Hansel, in your experience, is the provision regarding complaints against PCOB members a pretty much standard feature of operating procedures for oversight boards?
Uh, not in all. We actually had a case in Fairfax where we didn't have a procedure. But out of a complaint that arose from a subcommittee review of a case, uh, the complaining was listening to the the case, and he thought some of the members were being dismissive. Uh, so he filed a complaint, but we had no, no way to do anything about it. So we created a procedure, which is similar to the one that we, uh, the ones that's included in the operating procedures in the whole. The only difference is that in the Fairfax model, we would be able to, uh, as board members, essentially investigate ourselves, similar to the, um, the city attorney's version. So I thought, and here there was, um, I guess, a, an appetite for removing the board members from being able to review themselves. So there is kind of a hybrid of those two models.
And, and it, Cynthia or Bill perhaps, or Hansel, is the, um, the code of ethics that's referenced in there, the one from NACO?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure I understood what we were talking about.
It is, and there is, um, you know, the, one of the things that the city attorney gave us in in article three was she provided us with a, a, I think, a more legalist list of things for which board members could be removed. And disregarding the code of ethics is one, and of course, breaking the law is another.
Okay.
So, you know, so you can look at that list, uh, to get an idea of, uh, you know, where that section of our membership, uh, responsibilities is at this point.
Thanks.
So I, you know, my concern with the the concept of, uh, you know, dealing with complaints against the board is that, uh, you know, I, I am concerned with the optics of the board investigating itself. And, uh, so it sounds to me, and I must admit, this was not something that I read very thoroughly. It sounds to me like the city attorney's version, uh, kind of addresses that by, you know, setting aside the individual who's the subject of the accusation. But I think we may need to to think about revising this section a bit. And since we have some time, we can, uh, you know, again, put our heads together and then run it past the board informally to see if there are any, any reactions. So I've been monopolizing the discussion to this point, uh, throw open the floor to whatever concerns on anything associated with the operating procedures other members may have. I, by the way, I want to acknowledge, uh, thanks for the comments that we have received. Ms. Gilmore, do you, do you have any feelings at this point?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, um, what I think that we need to do, uh, you notice a couple of aster, you saw those asterisks in the document that where we need to plug in little bits of text. We then also need to presumably negotiate a format with the city attorney. And possibly, we have to chop up this documented to modules. What I would ask of the board is a vote of confidence that would allow us, the team of Hansel and myself and Teresa Hepler to do one more round of, uh, edits, and then to forward our draft formally to the city council. The reason I'm doing it this way is because we need to forward it to them by the eighth of April, which is before our next regularly scheduled meeting. So we need to, we, we can't wait till the next meeting. So, uh, and it, does anyone have any, uh, any problems with us doing that? Again, it's, uh, going to come back for many more rounds of, of approval. Hansel?
Yeah, I just wanted to get some clarification on what kind of edits and I guess have Ms. Hudson weigh in if that's something that's advisable. Because I'm not sure how many edits you're talking about. So I don't know. What would Ms. Hudson advise on that matter?
Could you clarify your question for me a little bit, um, Hansel?
There's.
About the nature of edits that might be.
Right, so the chair is proposing a, a vote of confidence to empower the subcommittee to further edit the document and just adopt the the document as is with changes as amended outside of the regular hearing. Oh, the regular board meeting so we can submit it to, uh, city council.
I'm, I'm sorry, and that wasn't my understanding of what Bill was proposing. So help, so thank you for that clarification. I, I actually understood that it would be the usual process by which the subgroup would edit, but that it would still come back to the full board, which I believe is necessary to get full board approval of the document as it's be formally submitted before it goes to council. So that it is truly, uh, a, a recommendation of the board. But I, I understand the approach that you're trying to take, Bill, but, but I'm not sure that it works under the ordinance.
Um, if, if I may interject.
Sure.
Um, Ms. Hudson, I, I think that, um, the, the chair is seeking to, uh, get around some, I don't know, I guess, inaction or lack of involvement so that we can get it expeditiously done. And I would, would a email, um, I guess, vote or response by a certain date accomplish that as well? As opposed to, um, just, you know, having to come back to the boards so that we can get this moved along to, um, to city council?
You know, FOIA expressly prevents you from conducting, taking action by way of, of email essentially an electronic uncalled meeting. You have to take action in a properly called meeting. And I'm glad to take a quick look at the ordinance to see, I mean, right now, as you all continue your business, to see whether or not I think it imposes a direct impediment to this board empowering a subgroup to submit to the council as, as board adjutant, a recommended set of procedures for them to adopt. Um, and if you'd like me to do that, I can look now.
I, I think that would be helpful. Uh, I think James here.
I'll just go off camera and take care of that.
Yeah, James, I think your hand was up first.
Yeah, I'm wondering if, um, if Remy could maybe send Ms. Hudson a, a phone number. This happens to me at work sometimes too with, with meetings. Maybe she can call in, even though she's got her, maybe, you know, we, we'll use the face. I'm sure you guys have been down this road before on meetings, where you, you know, you're on the video, but the sound is coming through her phone. Because I, it, it's really breaking up.
Yeah.
Let me, let me find out what the actual number is she needs to call.
Okay.
Uh, we can do that.
Maybe you could drop it in the chat.
Uh, Hansel, you put your, your hands up.
Yes, I just had a question for you, Mr. Chair. What kind of edits or you look at? It was my understanding that this meeting, you were going to finalize whatever needed to be finalized. And we would agree on content and then transfer it over to the modules format that is envisioned by the, the city attorney. Because I, I don't know what, what additional revisions do you see beyond what can be done here?
Well, are the only, in fact, the only edits that I think we would want to consider are, uh, the section, the, the missing paragraph at the end of article nine and the, or possibly substitution of the city attorney's methodology for dealing with complaints against, uh, against members. I think that's all that we need to do that is substantive.
Right, well, that, you could do that from here. You can motion for friendly edited amendments to the document, and then you could adopt it with the, with the friendly amendment. Or, you know, you don't have to be friendly amendments, you can have a, a discussion about it. But that's something that we could do here, and then we can adopt, uh, the document as amended. And then we'll send that document, a, as the record reflects that it was amended at this meeting, to city council.
With format changes.
Right.
Let, let me ask you this, and can you hear me?
I can, you know, you're.
Let me try something here. Is this any better?
A little louder, but not really much better.
Okay, my suggestion is this, that rather than try and fashion a workaround to make sure that the council is getting a recommended set of procedures that has truly been approved by a majority of the board. Because otherwise, it's not a board-approved recommendation. You're able to meet electronically in this format. You authorize this subgroup, Bill, Hansel, uh, others, to make these edits and then circulate the edited document as you normally do. Then you can simply, because you can call a special meeting anytime you want. Just call them, jump on for ten minutes. They will have had the opportunity to review it in advance and take your vote, rather than using, what, what, what to me is an unnecessarily convoluted process. Uh, unless you all are just that difficult to get together in terms of scheduling.
Yeah. Well, uh, Hansel?
It's, there, there are, it's not just necessarily the members. The, we do, we do also have restrictions, Ms. Hudson, that, uh, kind of prevent how many gatherings can be done, um, in the city. But I, I'm not sure if you heard my suggestion. It sounded like there were at least two specific revisions that the, the chair was envisioning. My suggestion was to motion right now at this meeting to amend, uh, with the suggested language. And they can amend the document here at this meeting with the new language and, and then vote to adopt the, uh, the procedures as amended here at this meeting and then send it to city council.
Are you suggesting that Bill and Teresa and you have the amended language tonight?
He had, it was my understanding that he has it, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, because I thought when you proposed that you were going to be continuing to work on it.
That's right. That's what I thought.
Yeah, no, we're, no, we got it.
Did you have the amended language? That, that is simple. It's, it's, but that's not the scenario that was described.
Okay.
As Hansel described, the next fine, you will have, you can approve it tonight, state the amendments in the motion with the understanding that they simply then need to be actually added by way of work processing. And you have an approved document, an approved set of procedures, the subject of however the vote comes out. Assuming that it is approved. But, but, but yes, that scenario works for me, but the other one, not so much.
So I guess I would entertain a, a motion that the board adopt the operating procedures with the changes that have been discussed to articles nine and thirty thirty-four.
Thirty-four, yeah.
Uh, someone want to make that motion?
So move. Oh, Hansel, I'm sorry.
Just to point a clarity in for Ms. Hudson, I, it might be best to make a motion for that specific amendment for article nine first. You vote on that motion, then you go to the next motion. Then, if there's no other discussion about the document, you've motioned to adopt the document as amended. And, and be specific about the language that you amended on each article.
You've indicated, just as has been discussed, it needs to be more particularized as to what the amendment will be, even if it's just descriptive in nature as opposed to exact words. That should be a part of the motion. And, and you can do it all in one, or you can divide it in the way that Hansel suggests, either one works.
So, so, well, yeah, and again, I'm just, you know, sorry.
The problem might be, I move to amend the procedures, or to, excuse me, move to adopt the procedures that we're reviewing this evening with the following amendments. Describe those amendments and vote. Take a second, discuss, vote, the usual process. And if you need a moment to succinctly describe the amendments, then just take a recess, five minutes. Whoever, uh, is, is going to make the motion.
Well, uh, I could make a motion if I, if I get out of the chair, if I give up the gavel.
You could do that.
Uh, so.
Ask the vice chair to then, um, provide over the, uh, the motion.
Okay, uh, uh, vice chair Watson, would you take over the chair for a moment?
Certainly.
Okay, I. Yeah.
Wait a minute though.
Well, whatever. You can have it for all, all night, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, I move that the board adopt the operating procedures we've discussed tonight with the following amendments. Article nine, add, uh, a paragraph that gives the board and the executive director consultative power, authority, uh, over the decisions to not investigate or investigate a complaint. And second, to adopt the language suggested by the city attorney substituting for the current article thirty-four. Is that okay?
I would just add this language for a recommendation of adoption, for adoption by the city council.
For a recommendation of, yes, for a recommendation of adoption by the city council. Okay, the motion's done.
Second.
Mr. Watson, you want to solicit any?
What was to say, or is, or is Hansel, uh? I see, I'm forgetting, I'm rusty on.
I was just asking if you, you want to ask whether or not there's any further discussion.
Right, that's right. Robert's rules, would, would, would you all like to, uh, discuss the motion? Any comments? Questions, ideas?
Hearing none, you may ask for a walkover.
Okay, it looks like we've got silence, although I had a feeling like Hansel was kind of wanting to say something, but maybe not. So, uh, hearing no comments. Can you do, can you poll the, poll the board, Hansel, please? Can you do, can you pull the pull the board, Hansel, please?
Yes, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Chair, Chair Mendez? Vice Chair Mendez? And Chair Watson?
Yes.
Okay, so. Hearing that, then the. Why I said the motion has been approved or? I'm rusty. I was rusty even when I was.
I think I think you have to, I think you have to give the reins back to the chair.
Now we'll hand the reins back over to Mr. Mendez.
Is Mr. Watson, Vice Chair Watson, is your new nickname Rusty, Rusty Watson?
That was when I was a, when I was a race car driver. I've had multiple careers.
All right, okay, well, thank you. Thank you, James. Appreciate it. And thank you everybody for for the work on this. And so the only thing that we can expect to change, you know, as we move forward is the language that we just stated. And possibly format. That's it. Now, the only other item that we had on our agenda was public comments. I see there are no attendees registered, so I don't think we're going to have any public comments. Does anyone have any more items of business that they would like to raise at this point?
One of the things I was reading in the. In the operating procedures in the PDF. It's it's page six of the PDF. Under part D vacancy. And it says if there is a vacancy in the position of executive director, which we hope not, because Hansel's good man. The city manager or their designee may designate some other city employee who is not an employee of the department to act as executive director. Until a new executive director is hired. When it says the department. They mean the police department, what what department is being referred to in that sentence? If you know what I'm talking.
No, I I understand.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I think. You got any opinion, Hansel?
Not sure that I understood what what the question was.
Let me get fast.
Article five D, Hansel.
Right. What what was the question, though?
So it talks about. Let me stop sharing this thing because I I'm not sharing the right thing, I don't believe.
I'm looking at it. I just didn't hear the question exactly.
Okay, so so my question is, what department or when they when they use that word department, right? Of course, I I don't even have it in front of me. What what department are they talking about like? Like, when they say the city employee who is not an employee of the department, is it the Parks and Rec? Is it the?
The the department is defined at some point in here as the police department or is the language from the ordinance that defines a department as the CPD. So they don't want an executive director to be an employee of the CPD during the vacancy.
Yes, for obvious reasons.
Okay, right. And that's that that was kind of what I was wondering. So is it the kind of scenario, the way this is written? That you don't spell out Charlottesville Police Department because you because it's been defined in the document at some point. You know, is it one of those things where it's where it's said once and then you just write the word department? I just thought that was a little fuzzy, but my would would, you know, I was thinking that it. Was probably talking about the actual police department. But I wasn't sure, because that would be kind of like, wouldn't make any sense, right? Like they have the actual police be the.
Yeah, no, I I believe that in the. Early sections, one of the early sections, it's, you know, it's defined as the Charlottesville Police Department. Here and after the department or it's in the definition section. And certainly, you know, we're not going to, you know, we we've we've done all our edits tonight, but. I think that's, I think that's understood. I mean, I think the purpose of that section is. Is just to make sure that the police, you know, that that a police employee doesn't become executive director.
Okay, yeah, because in article two, it 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 spells out the Charlottesville Police Department as the quote CPD. Or parentheses CPD, so. I mean, yeah, I mean. Most people will probably read that and then realize it's they're referring to the. Charlottesville Police Department, but. Again, I thought that was. A little unclear whether or not the city manager would be putting somebody within. Like a like Ashley Marshall, for example, who was before Hansel. Took his job, you know, had that as a standing position, which made sense. So I didn't know whether they were talking about within the purview of. That sort of executive staff that's around the city manager or, you know, it just didn't spell it out, that's all.
Yeah, the only thing that that clause does is is, as I say, keep. Keep a police employee from being executive director or acting. Okay. Hearing no other issues, I would certainly entertain a move to adjourn.
Go move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mendez?
Yes.
Chair Watson?
He's the R.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the hard work and we're we're getting there.
Yep, slowly but surely. Thanks a lot.
Good to see everybody. Good night.
Bye.